I want to call the July twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting of the Indianola City Council to order it will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll, please.
That's member Reed.
Here.
Armstrong.
Here.
Beach.
Here.
Stones.
Present.
I'm also here.
Sorry, yes.
All right. A public comment, we have a few things here first. I have a one that was submitted by email today and I will read that here in a moment. Anybody else wants to speak tonight on an item that is not on the agenda? You'll have three minutes to do so at the time that you're allotted if you are going to speak. Make sure you've got a form filled out and get it to Cassandra. And then when you do get up, state your name and address and the topic that you're going to talk about. So first things first here, we have a online submission from Don Remick. Twenty one oh three North Seventh Street here in Indianola. The comment was from Don regarding placing a stoplight at Kentucky in sixty five sixty nine and Aldi is a wanted business in this town. Products have changed for the better since their last run in Indianola, so it will definitely last. I'd rather my extra sales tax go to Warren County and not both. We drive to Des Moines, so we lost revenue on our town county. Listen to people you work for if they want this to happen. So that's the comment from Don. Who else do we have? Cassandra?
Jerry Huser. Warren County Ag Association.
Thank you, Mayor Richardson, members of the council. My name is Jerry Huser. I am the attorney that represents the Warren County Agricultural Association and the Warren County Fair. And I'm just here tonight because I'd like to make a couple of requests from the council and the mayor, if possible. The, since twenty twenty three, the fair has been working through some issues that resulted from an incident that occurred in twenty twenty three. We've attempted to work with the city and would like to continue to do so. And one of my requests is that the mayor and the council appoint a committee to work with us to figure out what is and can be done to resolve any issues that may exist between the city and the association. In, in June of this year, June twenty second, I sent a letter to the city attorney requesting that a ten thousand dollar grant for twenty twenty four be extended. We asked for clarification of some issues that were raised and addressed during meetings that occurred in August of last year and in letters that were received from your city attorney to me and then given to my client. During that conversation and during those emails, we had confusion over what was being requested from the city fire marshal and over jurisdiction issues that relate as, as it is between the city fire marshal and the state fire marshal and electrical providers. We are requesting this committee so that we can finally reach some resolution to some of the issues that have arisen over the last year. We also would really appreciate a response to our June twenty second letter and to my July first and second emails requesting whether or not we had received any response from the city as it related to that letter. Included in my email was the following comment. "The fair is fast approaching and I want to confirm that there is nothing being required from us at this point. The fair starts at twenty third of July. A contract was signed with the chief for EMS services and we believe we've, we've worked out all of the issues that may have been, been involved with that EMS agreement." And it has been executed. "The fair is also using a generator this year, the same as last year. We have and continue to work on some of the issues, but it will take a great deal of funds, which is why we're wondering whether the city will continue that twenty twenty four grant and consider us for the twenty twenty five grant." Finally, we understand that there are some issues and we want to resolve those. I am here before you because I requested that I be on your agenda and I had not heard back on that either. Those are our questions and I do want to clarify one other issue. It's a small detail, but I think we have some records that need to be updated. A notice of violation for weeds was sent out and it went to the county supervisors instead of to myself or to the fair. So if we could find out where in the technology system that address needs to be updated, we would appreciate it. So again, my request is that a committee be created to work with us to finally resolve these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. I usually speak on items here, but if I'm not incorrect here, the address that is on the Beacon system is the county treasurer, is that correct? So the addresses that we may be using based on Beacon go to the county treasurer. So you need to update your, can you talk to the treasurer, somebody that deals with the Beacon system and make sure that that is, the addresses are updated and the ownership is updated on that. We'll get together. Doug, we'll have your friend talk to Jerry and work out those details and those things we got there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other requests or comments tonight? Cassandra? Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none then, I'll move forward with the agenda. First things first is, the agenda, any items need to be pulled? Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
F?
I and F, okay. L? Okay. Any other items? Take a motion then to approve items of the entire consent agenda with the exception of items F, I, and L. So moved?
Second.
Motion is second. Let's call a roll, please.
That's member Beach.
Aye.
Stones.
Aye.
Lane.
Aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Item F, we have a motion on that one?
Can we have a little discussion first?
Okay.
Well, I would, I would like to, I guess, make a motion that we table this based on the fact that there are a number of outstanding questions. One, this came to us late. We knew about a lot of these things last year and there are questions on the added days and I just want to make sure that we have time to sort that out before we approve the order.
Okay. So that's a motion to table them?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Let's call a roll, please.
That's member Lane.
Aye.
Dolby.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beach.
Aye.
Stones.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Go to item I. Resolution setting date and time for annual trick or treat night, City of Indianola. Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve even though I pulled it.
Okay.
Moore had a statement, so I'll make a motion to approve.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, what's your point then?
One, I just wanted to make people aware of it because I know sometimes that can get buried that trick or treat will change nights. But then I was also just thinking like, future forward. If we're going to change the trick or treat night, do we want to consider some of one of the people are wanting, which is maybe to follow the bonderant model of the Saturday before Halloween? It uses a lot of pressure off of teachers, off of parents trying to rush home from work and then rushing back home to get everybody to bed. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential idea. If we were going to move it and model other communities, do we want to model the bonderant community of the Saturday, which people have kind of been clamoring for ever since the rain last year? So that was all. No questions.
This resolution actually sets the date on the thirty first, is that correct?
Yep.
Got a motion is second, so I guess that's up to the council what you want to do here. If you have one of those things, I think if we're gonna...
It was just future forward thinking.
Down the road.
Down the road, like, I'm good, I'm good doing this now and then people can know that it's changing because that's a change. But then do we want to consider down the road what that consideration might look like on that Saturday before Halloween?
Great, okay. All right, any further discussion? Got a motion is second, go ahead and call the roll, please.
That's member Dolby.
Aye.
Lane.
Aye.
Stones.
Aye.
Beach.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item L, Bob, what you got there?
Yeah, I just, I'm all for this. I just wanted to make sure, and I spoke with Doug, but I, I was trying to find it in my notes, make sure this is to bring them up to comping grade with the city, that the employees at the IWC, the new positions and the reconfiguration. And I, I remember Doug saying, two weeks ago, we were, it was a forty thousand dollar savings. The way you're restructuring, is that correct, Doug? I thought it might be good out there for the public because the idea wasn't the explanation in our materials this time.
For that leadership team, it will be moved on to that comping grades scale that the city has.
Okay.
With the changes of staff and reorganization, it will be overall net savings to the approved budget the council has done for this fiscal year of forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, good?
Yeah, I'm good. I think they're all very deserving.
Bob, you want to take a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you got a second? Let's call a roll, please.
That's member Dolby.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beach.
Aye.
Stones.
Aye.
Lane.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. What I did not do was go back and ask Jake to kind of run through the approve, the consent agenda. So I'm going to back up a little bit and ask you to do that, if you would, please.
I want to say something.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank the leadership team at IWC for working through this with us. They've been extremely helpful and resilient. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you for those comments.
And every, all the employees at the IWCs.
All right, so we'll go back to approval applications. The one, payment app number two and the amount of about ninety six thousand to certain construction for the West Clinton Avenue Reconstruction Project. The total project is about three hundred and seventy three thousand with nineteen thousand in contingency. That project started on May nineteenth and allows for sixty working days for completion. Project is forty two percent complete. The expenditures remain in line with expectations with no contingency being used to this point. Approval of payment application, the amount of seventeen thousand eight forty five to Vanderpool Construction for South K. Total contract of about one point eight million, added nearly eighteen thousand dollars for reseating and pavement markings. Approval of payment application number fifteen, the amount of forty one thousand five oh four eighty five to Vanderpool for the Hillcrest Avenue Payment Improvement Projects. Current payment reflects work completed to ninety two percent. Expenditures are in line with the project budget. Total contract price of five point one million. Consideration of the approval of the liquor license renewal for Danley Corp doing business as Jiffy. Work was in order and there was a recommendation for approval. Item E, resolution approving professional management services agreement with HR Green for the development of payment management program. Contract would be for thirty thousand dollars to develop a payment plan for the street network using data from the Iowa Payment Management Program. This would lead to the creation of a ten year capital improvement plan. Would also include software expenses of four thousand dollars for setup and thirty five hundred for ongoing costs. This does fall within the total project budget of fifty thousand dollars. Skipping F, G was a resolution amending the correcting the resolution number twenty five, twenty twenty five, one oh three, correct for an error in the calculation of the fiscal twenty six salaries. This was really just a clerical or administrative error in a spreadsheet. All of the salaries were appropriately accounted for within the FY twenty six budget and it was just a clerical error in that actual item. A letter H, resolution approving a letter of support for an energy efficiency and conservation block grant for electric vehicle charging stations. The Sustainability Committee is taking the lead on seeking funding to install two electric vehicle charging stations in public parking lots and is going to support them in their endeavor and their work for those grants. Skipping I, letter J, approval of the appointment of myself as an alternate to represent the South Central Iowa Landfill Board. This would approve my attendance at the meetings in the absence of the two council members, council member Armstrong and council member Stones are unavailable and possibly be an in-person presence at these meetings that are occurring out in Winterset. And then item K, we do have one property for the urban revitalization designation. And then L, we...
Thank you. I didn't give you that opportunity before, so. All right, council reports, presentation of twenty twenty four Police Department Annual Report. So Chief Sherry, you are up.
Mayor and council, thank you for having me tonight. I know twenty twenty four was seven months ago, but couldn't stay out of the news for a while. So we had a lot of squirrels this year, so finally we're up here. Council member Stones keeps calling me and knocking on my door. She said I had to come in here, so here we are. There we go. So employment highlights from twenty twenty four. Kevin Michaels was hired as a shared position with Community Development as our community service officer. And I know you guys got this report, I think, one or two times ago from the stats. He is one of our busiest people. So it's been great to take the pressure off of both Community Development and the Police Department to take some of the things that don't necessarily need a certified police officer for. Officer Marshall was assigned as our second school resource officer, again, continuing our partnership with the schools. And I know my kid loves him, he's in fifth grade now, so he's getting along great with them. Sergeant Brad Metcalf was named as interim lieutenant and Detective Nicole Brown was named as interim sergeant to temporarily fill those positions, two important positions on the Police Department. And last part, meaning you all approved our permanent fix to that. So we're in the process of vetting out a process to have permanent supervisors. Moving on. Look at that. Okay, so this is just a short video I want to show you guys and I'll explain it to you.
You're working late, dude. Late as hell. Sorry. That's for Chris. Or whatever he wants to do with it. That was just for, shit, it's inside. I just don't like.
Too fitty good?
Yeah, yes, sir. And then...
How much did dude take?
Just a key. So basically, he just dips a key in, does a little, and that's it. That's all he took. I didn't even bust it out on a plate or nothing like that.
Oh, I gotcha.
And I've tried it quite a few times. Pretty decent. Yeah, yeah, pretty decent. It, are you...
Does he step on it much or what's his...
It kind of depends. Like, sometimes it's like, maybe, I would say the average is like seven out of ten. It's no popular Escobar. It never will be. I'll be honest there. Don't think I've ever tasted anything like that. Seven out of ten. Worst case, six. And then best case, sometimes it's like an eight. Like, it just kind of pops up randomly. I can't ever really tell just by looking at it. He just like kind of does his thing.
I can't eyeball that either.
I think he's got like two guys he gets from and it depends on who it's from. Last time I complained, he hasn't went through him again. Do you partake?
Yeah, a little bit.
So if you do, I would just recommend like smaller. Bump it instead of...
Anything you can drive on or what?
I don't know, man. Like, if I do like lines as opposed to like bumps, I get very anxious, like very fast. And then I don't want to like do nothing. If I bump it out, I still feel great, I still have a good time. But that's your call.
What's going on, man?
Whatever. Sorry about the long day.
No, you're fine, man.
Been a [BLEEP] after [BLEEP] every [BLEEP] day this week, to be honest.
I'm getting switched over to second shift, so.
So what, like, like four to eleven type [BLEEP]?
It's two to ten technically.
Two to ten. Where do you work?
So you know the hotel they're building up at, in Norwalk?
Sure.
Okay, yeah.
Are you doing the construction there?
Yep, framing, yep.
Why are they doing second shift or is it, are you guys working on it all day?
They're just trying to get it done, man. They, they, that's beautiful. Behind, we're not behind on the project.
He didn't hit any?
Okay.
Yeah, we both got [BLEEP] and then I washed my pocket, so he didn't touch it this time. And when he does, it's literally like stick a key in.
Yeah, ain't too much.
Like, probably like a point one.
Yeah.
All right, here we go. Hey, get out, police department! Get on the ground! Get on the ground! Get on the ground!
On the ground, all the way, on your belly. On your belly, covering.
Copy. Hands like that.
Let's, let's secure that.
Let's take out the van.
Yeah, yep. They got it, they got it.
Oops. Okay. A Day in the Life is what I titled that segment. So why did I choose that video? That shows a lot of aspects of the Indianola Police Department and some of the partners we work with, utilizing many of our tools. On the left side of that screen, you saw there was a drug deal going on where an undercover officer from the Warren County Drug Task Force was utilized. Use of undercover cameras, drone support. You saw that whole time, we're a mile away from that scene, but we're crystal clear right on top. Fantastic evidence. What you didn't see was a three man reaction team that was hiding just feet from where that drug deal went down. In case something goes wrong, we have a code, we have a word, we have a phrase, we have something that we utilize in case something happens. And they're there before you know it. The suspect was known to go armed. So the second half of that video was a special response team arresting the subject for dealing drugs to the undercover officer. A dynamic takedown, which means a fast, quick, almost looks like a violent takedown, but no one gets hurt, was used away from his residence, away from his vehicle due to the suspect's criminal history and, as I mentioned before, known to go armed. We weren't as surprising. Drone support again, special response team and Flock was used during that operation. Warren County Drug Task Force is made up of members from the Indianola Police Department, Warren County Sheriff's Office, the Carlisle Police Department and the Warren County Attorney's Office. Board members meet with investigators monthly to go over intelligence that we may gather and our activity. The special response team also meets monthly with the board and members of the special response team train twice a month through the leadership of Lieutenant Largis, who's in charge of that. Any questions about that? I wanted to show you, there's a lot of different tools being used, a lot of things you guys have approved in our budget and we're very thankful for all of it because it all comes together very nicely for us. Training twenty twenty four. Police Department trained two thousand three hundred and six documented hours in twenty twenty four. We keep comprehensive training records and this by far exceeds the state's mandatory twelve hours per officer per year or thirty six hours over three years. That's how the state has mandated us. We utilize a lot of free training. Training budget was pretty good last year. I think we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty five to forty thousand. This year, that's knocked down to five thousand, but we're going to utilize a lot of free training. There are a lot of places out there that, that provide free training for law enforcement. Controversial topic, Flock. Before this was implemented, I got to meet with some of you as groups, some of you one on one. Flock, council member Lane, if you don't know, are the license plate reader cameras that we have around town. We have twelve of them that are set up around town. In twenty twenty four, thirty six cases were made by the Police Department with Flock assistance. Wanted subjects, stolen vehicles and, most importantly, locating two missing endangered people were the highlights of our Flock system. We also assisted many outside agencies with Flock information, including a willful injury case out of the county and an attempted murder case out of the county. Attempted murder case, willful injury case was actually solved by our Flock cameras. Internal recognition. It is important to highlight our officers, our police staff that go above and beyond. Eight officers were recognized in twenty twenty four with nine separate commendations. One civilian was also recognized for actions taken during a missing child incident. One example of commendation was two officers assisted a stranded motorist in a snowstorm. This was a horrible snowstorm we had in twenty twenty four and the officers got to the elderly stuck motorist by walking over a quarter mile to reach him. There was no help coming for up to four hours. So they called us as supervisors and we sent them on their way to go out there. They reached this subject and assisted him back to his residence. One more video because I like to entertain, sorry.
Camera recording started.
Body cameras, thank you. Victims and children are alerted.
Are you okay?
This is a female and a child hiding in her locked car due to a domestic situation.
Do you have any weapons in there or anything like that?
I don't think so, I don't know, maybe a pocket knife.
All right, thank you. County one eighteen, he's destroying the house inside, I'm going to make entry. Hey! That's enough. What are you doing, man?
What am I doing? No way to throw me on the [BLEEP] ground. Punk.
Stand there. I'm eleven three.
Can I get my shoulder bag?
What's that?
My shoulder?
We'll have to take that off.
What about the rest of my [BLEEP]? All I need is one other bag, bro.
What's that?
I just need one other bag, bro.
What other bag?
These are my tools.
Where are they at? Do you do all this?
Yes, I did.
You know your Miranda rights?
Yep, I do. All right, I'm going [BLEEP], bro, I really don't go [BLEEP].
Where's your... Huh? Where's that?
This is a tiny little black bag. I got him.
We'll have to get his bag off.
You got this, it's way too [BLEEP] tight, bro. I'm not going anywhere.
I didn't get a chance to double lock him.
Oh, wow, you need to double lock him for real? I ain't going nowhere. I want to be arrested. No, you listen to me.
That means they don't get tighter.
If I don't double lock him, they tighten up. That's what I'm getting at.
I ain't going anywhere, is what I'm telling you. I want to be [BLEEP] arrested. I don't go [BLEEP]. I cannot feel my [BLEEP] hands.
We're trying to loosen them.
I'm trying to loosen them. We're going to take the bag off of you.
Not good, bro, for real. I'm not going anywhere, I'm not going anywhere, you guys, I totally do that.
We know. I gotta take the other couple.
I am waiting, one cop is off me, right?
No, we can't.
I have to get...
Just wait.
I am waiting, dog.
Why are you so worked up at us?
I wonder why, because of that dumb [BLEEP] out there, bro? That's why. Disrespectful [BLEEP]. Make him tighter, bro.
Hey, knock it off.
No, bro. Go [BLEEP] yourself.
Scott's helping yourself.
It is, I don't go [BLEEP].
Do you quit squirming?
No, go, bro, my bru- my hands is bruised, ow! Bro?
Quit tensing up then.
I am not tensing up! Bro?
All right. Okay, let's, let's get him down, all the way down. Well, I think it's a little...
Oh, dumb.
The cops are walking. Look at your cops. There we go. Went the walk. I'm not sure, man.
God, damn it, [BLEEP] hurting you. I'm not [BLEEP] you, dog, you're hurting me.
Alright, you get the idea, right? Why did I show you that videos? That video. Officers in Indianola responded in 2024 to 171 domestic situations. Unfortunately, someone calls is because there's a disturbance going on already. This is what we walk into oftentimes. Needs immediate attention and immediate control taken care of. I get asked this a lot, a lot. And if you get on Facebook, why are there four cop cars over there? Why are there six cop cars over there? Why are there? That's why, that's why. We're not there to hurt the subject, we're there to control the situation with as many people as necessary and get that person off to jail. We didn't hurt that individual at all. We were trying to loosen the cuffs, we were trying to make him more comfortable. Of course, a lot of times, they don't wanna go along with the program, which is what we saw, but we're still professional, we're still nice, still trying to get our job done with the least force possible. It's important. Well, it, cause I, I know I've gotten this from council members before, and it's not just, you get, why were there 10 cops over there? Why were there six cops over there? That's why. We, we drive single man units. If there's a car, there's an officer. There were three, I think three there, Jay, uh, Josh, and, uh, Ty. And you're talking Ty and Jay, those are two big dudes. You know, so. But it was, it was calm, they got him cuffed, and they got him off to jail. It's important to see that. It's important to see reality. Statistics. I might need my glasses for this one. So as you can see, our calls for service went up 5.7%. Our traffic, uh, enforcement went up 16.7%. During that same time, our thefts went down 23%, and our criminal mischief went down 2.9%. There is always a correlation between traffic enforcement, which is being visible, being out there, stopping vehicles, interacting with people, and a reduction in certain crimes. People don't wanna risk it when they see that we're out there. They see we're interacting with people, they see that we're stopping cars. The second statistic I wanna show you is citations and OWIs were up dramatically. Why did that happen? Being fully staffed. We were down four and at 1.5 officers before 2024. We were fully staffed with new, young, invigorated policemen, policewomen to stop cars and enforce citations and enforce OWIs. Um, fully staffed, it's the only reason. So I wanna thank you for approving the backfills that we just went through the last couple council meetings. Um, we're very happy with 24 officers. We need that many. Um, it makes a huge difference. Lastly, I just wanna highlight some of the community stuff that we do. We do as much as we can. 2024, of course, RagBri. Um, we did a chili cook-off for a Norrock officer that unfortunately passed away from pancreatic cancer. The balloons, the fair, um, our dog is everywhere. We partner with Walmart for our, um, elves in blue, Hy-Vee for a Nerf gun war after Cabaret, Granny Basketball, the Legion, the Mayor's Youth Council. Of course, city functions where, you know, I thought that, that, uh, [BLEEP] should've won, but. And lastly, Jay and Ross at prom. I mean, we have to end on Jay and Ross at prom. That's my presentation along with my report for you guys to receive.
What, what are they refereeing?
You know, I don't know if they're just refereeing, you know, it's Powder Puff Football for upcoming, yes, that, that's what they're.
Alright.
So, but, but the Jay and Ross, I ordered five by seven.
I was gonna say, if they were doing the Granny Basketball game, a little, little of an issue there with a little.
Yeah, it's Powder Puff Football. I'm happy to entertain any questions, anything about the report that you guys have about the presentation.
That was great, chief. I think you answered question, I mean, you said it, why are there three cars? It's just valuable information for people to hear from you guys, not just us, but from you guys too, so it was great info.
Yeah, and I'm not pointing fingers, but I, I get that a lot. I, I've, I've gotten them from people in this room, I get it from the public all the time. Or if you read Facebook, why are there 12 cop cars? Because there needs to be. I mean, that, that's just how I need to answer that question, cause there needs to be. As soon as we need 11, we're gonna break one away. As soon as we need 10, we break one away.
I just wanna say thanks. You guys do a great job.
Thank you guys for supporting us. It really means a lot.
Calling out these statistics and the correlation between one and another is exactly why I've been knocking on your door and asking you to come call out these things for the community.
Yeah, having people helps keep the community safer, having law enforcement, being fully staffed, um, and, and seeing the, the correlations between the number of officers, what the officers are doing, and crime reduction in certain aspects of, of the city.
Alright, when they know what you're up to, they don't ask as many questions.
I get it. And, and one thing, you know, the recognitions and the putting, I'm not very good at putting stuff out, I'm just straight up. Aaron has helped me, where's Aaron? He's helped me quite a bit in the, since he's been here. Um, he helped bleep out all those, uh, tapes, you know. Uh, yeah, no, and he keeps pushing me to do better, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I have one to add. When I did my first ride-along, um, Ty Sparks and Officer Temple, uh, went and dug out an elderly lady who was very concerned about not being able to open her door, and they noticed not only her door was snowed in, but, um, several others. And so they just went, um, on down the, the complex and dug them out.
Yeah, it's, it's.
They are just.
It's serve and protect, right?
Yes.
We can't miss that first one, serve. And, and that's nothing we're gonna put on Facebook, that's nothing we're gonna, we're not gonna pat ourselves on the back for doing that.
Well, I did.
Externally. Internally, we tell them how good they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, it was the night of the blizzard, and there were probably 18 inches of snow in front of their doors.
Probably the same night the guy got stuck in the.
Yeah, probably.
I'm gonna guess that, um, the money we spent with the body cameras is well spent.
Oh, boy. We should've done it five years earlier. Yeah, it, it eliminate, Mayor, you know, you've been in my office a couple times.
Yeah.
It eliminates everything because.
I wasn't on the camera, but.
No, you weren't. Not that time.
Did you clarify that?
Instead of doing an internal investigation and witnesses and you gotta do the whole thing, you know, sometimes you have to anyway, but if you can just press play and watch it, it makes things so much easier, so much more streamlined, and it's evidence. Like, i- if you missed what Sergeant Sparks asked, asked the suspect right after he got him in handcuffs, did you do all this? Yes, he just made a confession.
I think the, uh, the one that was very clear to me was the one I came in and was asking you about, um, a traffic stop that your officers had made. Person was saying that accusing them of their various nefarious things, and obviously that wasn't shown in any of the videos that were there, and it was pretty easy and pretty clear, just basically to, that, uh, we had some threatening things from the lawyer that was representing that individual, and basically just saying, you know, go right ahead, cause we got evidence here to say otherwise, so.
I, I love that story because I came, I called you in and I was geared up, man. I was ready. I was like, alright, I'm gonna show the mayor this, and, and I'm gonna explain it to him, and I'm, after the mayor watched the video, his only words to me was, "I'll take care of this." You burst my bubble. I was really ready to go.
Sorry.
But it was just that clear, "I'll take care of this."
Yeah.
So, yeah, Flock cameras have been a huge success. Body cameras, the drone, the support the drone can give to us, it's all on video. The drug deal is on video.
Yeah.
All those other cameras we have, which I'm not gonna tell you about, i- it's crystal clear, and you can hear them crystal clear, not like back in the day.
Well, the things that you've told me, and I'm sure other members of the council as well, and I don't wanna belabor this any much, but I do wanna say, you do, guys do a great job. Um, you had somebody that was lost, was that with the dog or the drone that you found that individual rather quickly? Do you remember that they were, uh, either in, do you remember what I'm talking about here? No, okay. I was thinking it was a child or somebody that was older, one of the two, that you had somebody that was found very quickly.
The Flock camera is, was.
That was the gentleman that was going north out of Des Moines, you're right, but there was somebody that had walked in. Do you remember, John, who that would've been? Probably not, huh?
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah, dog has done tracks a- and found people in that drone. I mean, y- you see, we're a mile away, you can get up and focus in real quick as opposed to the time it takes you to get there, get out, walk around, look. I mean, and, and that original drone was bought by drug dealers from seized.
Yeah, right. Council have any other questions for the chief?
Just thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on then to committee reports, uh, Catch Des Moines, Steve.
Uh, so I gave my update at the last meeting.
You did.
So, I don't have anything more.
Okay.
I'll just give a shout-out to the IBC 12U baseball team for taking second state last night then.
Very good.
That can be the Catch Des Moines update. Late night.
You did great.
Uh, Serpta?
Yes? So, Serpta, we approved the four-year, uh, tip plan. Um, that is the, the plan for, uh, four years of projects projected. Uh, Indianola does not have a project on there for this four-year stretch. Uh, as you know, we had South Cay and East Hillcrest, so we're just rolling off of spending a lot of money, and our bank is depleted. So we'll sit on the sidelines until we get money built back up. You, as you all know, we talked about the, whether we should do the three-lane expansion and go for it and try to spend ahead, and we decided to know on that. Um, but we, this plan isn't, well, it's a four-year plan, it's not, um, a firm plan, we can add to it at any time. So, um, it's something that can be added later. Uh, we also approved the, uh, fiscal year budget. So that's, um, behind us. So that's for Serpta. Um, I have a couple other.
Go ahead.
Committee updates. Um, Hometown Pride, um, our big parade is this Saturday. The Celebrate Warren County Parade, that celebrates, um, the fair, the Warren County Fair, and the balloons, um, overlapping that weekend, and everything great about Warren County. Uh, in the past, we've had as many as 100 entrants. Uh, when Hometown Pride took it over, it was 37 the year prior. So our committee has grown it, um, greatly. Although this year, we are down, and, um, I attribute that to the small size of our committee. So, um, anyone out there who may be interested in a volunteer opportunity, we welcome you to apply. Um, and if you have a couple free hours on Saturday, we would also welcome some help, um, with, uh, putting out barricades and standing there watching the parade as it rolls through, and then putting the barricades back on the curb when the parade is done.
What time do you need that done?
Uh, so the parade starts at 10:30. Um, you just put it out when you see the parade approach, and then watch the parade roll through and put the barricade back when the parade is done. So, pretty easy assignment.
Why don't you put me down for somewhere, if you would?
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
We need eight, eight intersections that are, that are busier, busier intersections, um, but it's a really easy assignment.
Okay.
Get to stand there and enjoy the parade.
Sure.
Um, also, on Hometown Pride, we have the four sculptures left on the Wonderon Buxton project that will be making their way here, um, in the August timeframe, so those concrete pedestals that are sitting around between the college and the square will be filled with sculptures soon. So that's it for, um, Wonderon Buxton and Hometown Pride. Um, I guess I'll mention one more thing on, uh, sorry. Um, we will be going before the Board of Supervisors on Wednesday. Um, we had $20,000 allocated for, um, of ARPA funds allocated to us as part of our project, and we are not moving forward with, um, repaving the parking lot between, um, the opera and the temple. Um, so we are asking the county to reallocate that money to, um, placemaking signs, wayfinding, and, um, instead use that to, um, make signs for, uh, downtown Main Street. And that still falls within the scope of our project because we had, um, this downtown placemaking signs in the scope of our project, um, due to streetscape, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's that for, um, Hometown Pride. And my last committee update for tonight is the landfill. Sorry, it's been a bit.
No.
Um, we are working, making our way through the 28E updates. Um, Jake, Steve, and Jackie and I met to go through them and make, uh, changes that we feel should be made on our side. We will meet with, as the board, um, before our next, uh, board meeting in, in two months, and go through it with them and see where we land, and then, um, it will, um, go through legal and then make its way to council before it's all approved and finalized. Uh, we also, uh, talked about, um, our audit reports. Um, I know you've heard me talk about these before and how, um, I've really pushed to strengthen some of the controls in place or lack thereof. We've had a number of things called out multiple years in a row, um, regarding, um, the lack of segregation of duties and cash handling and other, um, financial duties. Um, I did recommend that we hire a part-time assistant manager, and the board did approve that. So we will be posting that, um, in the near future to mitigate those risks. Um, I think it's a good move for us as a landfill, and as our manager, um, gets up there in age and is talking more about retirement, it also mitigates the risk of us losing an employee and not having bench strength. The last thing I think, Steve, is, um, we talked about increasing gate fees $1. Uh, we will have that on the agenda for approval next meeting. And we've been, um, Sarah from TRM has been attending our meetings occasionally, so it's been nice to have
Yeah.
Someone there to represent. And, um, very happy to have Jake join us with his expertise, so. Have they started doing credit cards at all yet? Um, oh, Christina. I, um.
Whole other meeting.
Yes, um, I've, so I've very frequently talked about this issue and sent a message, um, with deadlines. Um, they now have fiber ran to the landfill, it's just not ran to the building. And I get educated a lot on the fact that the landfill's built on a rock quarry. So, my, my, um, recommendation is that if they can't get it ran to the actual building, that we move forward with, um, either a hotspot or satellite internet. And until then, um, we should look at another alternate, alternative to holding meetings so that we can, um, meet the requirements of the state meeting laws for electronic and move forward with. So they're still not, they're also not doing in-person meetings, still? They're doing in-person meetings, but they're not able to, uh, meet the requirement of the state law that was passed. They're doing in-person meetings, but they're not able to meet the requirement of the state law that was passed in July of twenty-twenty-four that requires an electronic means for board members.
Yeah.
Affects Steve because he
Me. So I basically
It also affected me when I
Put on a speakerphone and then hear a lot of gurgling.
Yeah, it affects me.
And I send really mean emails about
It's been an issue for the last four years. I mean, it was the same way when I sat on the board with John. We were constantly requesting something, but at least we were able to get some in-person ones here. Have you guys discussed that more?
We have. We've that is one thing that I've said, if, if we can't get a site there or get some kind of internet option, then we should, we can meet here. And of course, they don't like that idea, but we can't get it, an option in place by the next meeting, then we'll have to push the issue. And having Dick on board, it may help.
Well, you're violating, you know, the state law. And it goes back to our open meetings issues that we're going to talk about a little later, too.
And I, meeting I did also have to educate them on open meeting laws.
Okay. Bob, you had some things you need to throw in here?
I do. A week ago, I attended the IMU meeting on the fourteenth, and Jake was there as well to introduce himself to the IMU board and let him know of his availability and excitement to be here. So thank you for doing that, Jake. They gave their May financial report. Chris Longer presented that and things to, seemed to be in pretty good balance. There was an update on Emerald Bay and other projects in town. They approved the purchase of a new VAC trailer for the water department. They also approved the purchase of a, an engineering truck, a twenty-twenty-five engineering truck replacing a two thousand and nine Ford that they had was something that, from the sounds of the conversation, they desperately needed. Then get my notes here. They talked about fiber work at Ashton Park Summer Crest and Emerald Bay and nearing completion or as far as they can be right now with that project until there are residents there. And then they considered the utility accounts and, and approved the, what they refer to as their normal write-offs. And they are trying to use their bills and their monthly newsletter in the bills to communicate various programs that IMU puts forth and encouraged their board, as well as those in attendance, to encourage others to pay attention to those because there's a lot of good information. Then this afternoon, I attended the MIPA meeting, the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance. We reviewed and approved the June transaction list and then reviewed budget versus actual and year-end activity. There are three vacancies right now on the board. Marion County, Van Meter and Knoxville Representatives are all vacant. Reviewed invoices and contracts and discussed the state funds that are committed this year, but next year is still unknown, just because of what the feds may be doing. If there will be those funds available. Discussed an investment policy. We asked the staff to go back and clean up some of the language that they came forth with. So I'll have that to report on, I'm sure, next month as well. And then we talked about COGS, which, when they first brought that up, I wasn't sure what they were talking about, but it's councils of governments in the different districts throughout the state and how those go about, and then talked about the possibility of there being a new one in central Iowa sometime in the future. That should do it.
Thank you. I, the only thing I have is Jake, I and I think Doug Bryan met with MPO and SERPA with Andrew and Sarah, what was her name again? If I can remember. Doug, huh? Sandra?
AP was there.
Yeah, AP was there as well. That's right. And basically talked about those organizations trying to work better together. Also, the fact that we talked about the two projects that we had talked about, which was mentioned earlier about the turning lane on sixty-five, sixty-nine and Super Two to Highway, to I thirty-five. Basically, they walked around, we, we all walked around the, the community, looking at different intersections, other kinds of things, too, talking through that process. And it was just an opportunity to kind of meet some folks that are new to the organization as well, so it was a good opportunity for all of us. Any other reports?
Well, can I ask, in the future, those kind of meetings that
Yeah.
we get invited as representatives, it would have been hopeful.
It would have been. We just kind of got that at the last minute. If I remember right, it wasn't real, it was a kind of a short notice thing, too. We got thrown in there. That's okay. They, they showed up eight o'clock, eight o'clock, seven o'clock? Seven AM, yeah, in the morning, so.
I do have a correction to the meeting time for the Board of Supervisors' work-study session for us to talk to them about the reallocation of funds. It is Tuesday tomorrow at nine AM.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to my committee update. Couple things quickly. I've got two applicants for the IMU board that I have, one of them brought forth next meeting. Going to meet with, I'm going to try to meet with both of them here in this sometime this week or next week. We also, in front of you, is the Elks Club here is having a veterans' recognition ceremony on Saturday the twenty-sixth. The Warren County Fairground starts at four o'clock. There's a number of different things going on. There's going to be some recognition. My anticipation is that that'll be over between four and fourth or five, four and five-thirty, somewhere in that neighborhood. But it's at the Warren County Fairgrounds. I'm going to guess it's probably in that amphitheater area where they have different things go on and the free shows and stuff, so.
It's on the free stage.
Yeah, it's free stage. And so it's in front of you there if you want to, want to. Also, speaking of the fair, it starts Wednesday, runs through the weekend essentially, and then we've got balloonists coming in here on Friday. So we've got a lot of things going on here in the next week or so. So please be careful when you're traveling in the community, making sure you got a lot of new folks here and maybe some slower traffic, so kind of keep that in mind as well. All right, let's move on to public consideration, old business, resolution approving final plat for Pickard Park Commerce Park One.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Bill, you up on this one?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, Allison Riley was the, was the lady's name who set that meeting up with
That's correct. Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
So this, the applicant and owner of this case is I-Town Investment Group LLC, represented by Jason Ledden with Snyder and Associates. And they're requesting approval of a final plat for a commercial and industrial subdivision located south of Highway ninety-two and then east of South Fifteenth Street. It's just under twenty, just under twenty acres. It was rezoned from C-two to C-two and M-two. The original preliminary plat showed eight lots. They revised that preliminary plat to twelve. So all those were approved earlier this year. March third, twenty-twenty-five was, was council's approval of that revised preliminary plat. Again, there, there are twelve lots here for consideration and one outlaw for stormwater detention. It's at the south end of the site. That outlaw will be owned and maintained by the association. The lots range in size from one acre to one point eight six acres in area. The outlaw is one point seven seven acres in area. Street lots will be deeded to the city for public right-of-way. Access to the site will be off of Highway ninety-two with an extension of South Twentieth Street. South Twenty-first Street will be the new street, the north-south street that most of the lots will, will use to access their sites. Five-foot sidewalks will be installed with each lot as they are developed. No new trails are proposed. The site will be serviced with public utilities, which are in the process of being installed or already have been installed. All easements have been shown and labeled on the plat. These include PUEs, ingress-egress easement, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, snowstorm easements, and also landscape buffer easement. The final plat is in general conformance with our zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and a comprehensive plan, and the staff recommends approval of the final plat contingent on the city's receipt of a signed and sealed completion certificate, and all infrastructure complies with the approved subdivision plans and specifications. Happy to take any questions. Also, the engineer is, is in attendance as well.
I have a question. Can you talk about Outlet A, Street Lot A and Lo, Street Lot B?
Street Lots A and B are the public streets, so they'll be named, that's what you'll drive on.
Okay.
The other outlaw is something that came up a little bit later because of, because the DOT denied that original access. They're going to use that, that other outlaw as more a shared private access to those north four lots. Because you, you can't access them from ninety-two, so instead they'll, they'll come down South Twenty, South Twentieth Street and then turn, turn east. And then the public street will go to the south, and then the private access easement will be to the north access those other four lots.
I guess I'm just wondering why it isn't part of South Twenty-first Street.
I'll let Jason explain that.
Hey, Mayor, Council. It is, it is private.
Jason, would you tell us who you're with and your name?
Sure, thank you. Jason Ledden with Snyder and Associates, twenty-seven, twenty-seven Southwest Snyder Boulevard, Naceny. Apologize. Outlet A will be privately owned and maintained by the association. Therefore, it will not be a part of Twentieth Street. It will not be the responsibility of the city to maintain it. So that and, and the stormwater management basin on the south will be owned and maintained by the association. Therefore, that is why it's not part of the street. And because it will be just a private access drive between the two, it, it wouldn't meet city's street requirements.
Outlet Y?
Correct. On the north, correct.
Any other questions for Jason or any other questions for staff?
So the city's not, not reliable for Street Lot A and B?
We, we would be there. They'll be deeded to the city.
But they will be deeded. So we'll be doing snow removal and all those?
Correct. The snowstorm easement is in the cul-de-sac at the south end of the site.
Do they actually have names besides A and B?
They'll have street names, yes, but
Street Lot, Street Lot A will be South Twentieth Street.
Yeah.
The east-west street, Street Lot B will be Pickard Place.
Way.
Way.
Pickard Way, it's on
Way, yep. And then the cul-de-sac will be South Twenty-first Street.
Any further questions? This is subject to what again? Is part of the, is part of the motion, is what now?
You can read that. What you just said
So, so it's contingent on the city's receipt of a signed and sealed completion certificate, and all infrastructure complies with the approved subdivision plans and specifications. They're, they're looking for approval before all the improvements are installed. So we have, we have a bond for the improvements.
You have some inspections to do, yeah? Is that correct? And so it's subject to inspections, and is that correct?
And, and on behalf of the developer, we agree to that.
Yeah, right. But I just want to make sure and clear that it's based on the inspections and all the, of the items that need to be done.
On receipt to public votes.
Mayor, the motion did need to be amended to include Include those items.
Who made the motion here?
I think it was just in the actual resolution.
Well, it's not in the resol, the resolution says P and Z approved it subject to conditions, but it doesn't say you do, so.
Twenty-four hours, we would have to make the amendment here.
Yes. Sandra, who made the motion?
I'm not actually sure.
So you made the motion with what?
Councilmember Armstrong, second by half a person.
I will amend my motion to approve to include Bill's items.
Okay.
Which are the inspections and everything goes forth and all of the items that need to be part of the memorandum, okay?
Before we go on, I, I'm stuck on this Outlet Y. Sorry.
Do we have, who had the second, though? Let's get this done first.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Melissa?
So I understand that the, the owners now of Lot Two and is Lot One sold also? No. Okay, so Lot Two, I believe, is the owner, the developer is building on that lot. So they understand the the deal and the arrangement with this. But when it comes to selling in the future, this is something that is going to be attached to the deed and very well spelled out.
So there's a covenants with this that it will be a part of the association. So very similar to homeowners' association where a private stormwater management facility is, is maintained with the homeowners' association, this outlaw will also be maintained as well.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Further questions? Do we have the motion as we need to have it? Do we, we got a second? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Councilmember Lane? Sells?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Discussion and direction regarding animal control in the city of Indianola. Jake, I'll let you handle this one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You're getting me as the C-team tonight since Jackie and Brian are both away, so I will fill in on this item.
I may stop you just a second. First thing we need to do is pull this off a table. I need a motion to, to remove it from the table and bring it forth for discussion, and I need a second, and then we'll vote, and then we'll go to that. Do I have a motion to do so? Do I have a second? Clerk, call a roll, please. Councilmember Lane made the motion.
Councilmember Sells?
Aye.
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Motion carries. City manager.
All right, we'll jump right back in, Mayor and Council. Following up from our meeting last time, staff presented a recommendation to council for animal control services within the city of Indianola. Involved an updated policy about vicious animals and then engaging either Animal Rescue League of Iowa or Kayakota to perform resulting animal control services. After discussion at city council, the direction to staff was to engage both Kayakota and the Animal Rescue League of Iowa to obtain letters of intent to provide service. Since the last meeting, we have obtained a letter from Kayakota that the Board of Directors has decided not to perform the services for animal control as requested by the city, which would have entailed the non-vicious dogs that would relate or stem from police activity. Staff has worked diligently with ARL, having at least one meeting and also having ongoing communication where, through phone and email. ARL has expressed interest in providing services to the city of Indianola. They have been working late this week yet to complete the letter of intent in partnership with their attorney. Unfortunately, we, through diligent follow-up, we've not obtained that letter of intent from ARL yet, while they have continued to express interest in partnering with us. This time, staff does bring it back for direction for city council. Couple of options here. If council wants to proceed, they could give staff direction to provide the notice of termination to Kayakota, which starts that sixty-day termination clock for us. We would begin working on that updated policy for animal control that was referenced at the last meeting, and we would get those items in motion. Respectfully, I do understand that council did request that we would have a letter of intent for this meeting. Again, I do want to reiterate, staff has been working diligently towards that end. So if council would again like to table this item, that would certainly be another option for us to continue working with ARL to ensure that we have at least that letter of intent for next meeting. Typically, that would be my recommendation to council because that was a desired ask, but also just knowing that because we have not provided that termination notice to Kayakota, every two weeks does, you know, cost us the equivalent of around two thousand dollars. That is an unbudgeted expense. So bringing it back, just with that in mind, really two options. We can get direction to kind of proceed down this route, provide the termination notice, begin drafting policy, or if we want to table it again, we could certainly have the letter of intent from ARL for the next meeting.
So I guess I have a question. When reading the letter from Kayakota, I kind of took that as a letter of termination from them, so are, do we even have to give them a letter of termination?
I, well, I'm seeing Doug nod his head, and I do, I do want to clarify, you know, I've talked to President Rasko of Kayakota, and I do want to respect, you know, his note. Really, as part of their letter, he wanted to make sure that the council members know that animal control, as Kayakota has been used to providing it for the city of Indianola, was taken effectively off the table. And they would be interested in providing that service if it ever came back in that format. So essentially, what Kayakota is saying in their letter is they're not interested in providing the services as we've requested them, but they would be interested in providing animal control services if they were to go back to how they've been done in the past.
So Doug, you're saying that's their notice?
I don't think it is their notice.
Okay, 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 sorry.
They're basically saying we don't want to do what you were talking about us
Other, okay, they, they're just saying
I just don't understand the difference, really, because they're the ones that said they didn't want to handle vicious dogs, and currently, they handle vicious.
Well, but if Well, but if John Doe's dog gets out, they respond to that. That wouldn't be what we were talking about. So John Doe, John Doe's dog gets out. PD finds out they're vaccinated, they're not vicious, John Doe's dogs, they're for John Doe to come home. Like, we wouldn't call Kayakota for that. It would only be if PD responded to like a domestic and there was a dog there that Kayakota was going to come to. So no cats, only a PD call like on a domestic.
The no cats thing again though was there.
So.
That was their requirement, they didn't wanna handle cats.
Currently, they do, so.
It was their suggestion to.
To get rid of cats.
Our budget limitation.
The current contract that we have is still in force because nobody's given the sixty days. So if cats are in that contract, they're handling cats. They might not like it, but that's what the contract is. They don't wanna get John Doe's dog today, well, if they're getting John Doe's dog today because we're paying them. They don't, we wouldn't be getting John Doe's dog or John Doe's cat. Only if police calls and it's not vaccinated or aggressive. Only on a police call and that's what they're saying, they don't wanna do that, so. That's like the big difference of what we were asking to what they do today.
It doesn't meet their mission to single it out and only handle what we were asking them to do.
I think, I guess, I know Jake's looking for probably some direction, but I would say table it until we can get the letter of intent just to make, just to be safe, to know that we get that and that nothing catastrophic were to happen. We still have the contract in place, neither side is.
Well, you saw the contract in place for sixty days, even if we give notice.
Yeah, but we, we could've done that last meeting and chose not to, because we wanted to have.
But I think we did a little more now than we did last, our last meeting.
Yeah, last meeting, they were still saying that they wanted to work with the city. Now they're saying they no longer wish to do anything unless it is exactly what they're doing now.
Which they're still doing because of the contract being in place, so I mean, it's up for council to decide, right? Do you want to make sure in sixty days that it's done? Or do you wanna make sure we have something in place with A R L and maybe it gets extended out seventy-five days?
I wanna make sure that we have a letter of intent. Right now, we have a meeting and phone calls, but we have no letter of intent from them. What's the holdup with their legal counsel getting this done?
We don't, I mean, I, I guess I don't see what the holdup is, is terminating the contract. It just costs additional money because they're not willing to go down that, that, that option that the city was wanting to do.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna keep pushing it off and keep paying them, then we might as well just continue our contract.
So to be fair, the services that they provide or providing by the contract would be provided today. There is no change in the contract. I wanna make sure everybody is clear on that because we could've done this two weeks ago. And done, and, and done the sixty days, but we didn't. And so that's why I just continued with the direction of making sure nothing bad happens with A R L. And making sure that we have, have that letter of intent in place. Because if something bad were to happen and we've put that sixty days into cycle.
We have nothing.
You've got nothing. But I played on that conservative side there of like, I, I would rather be safe than sorry.
Bob, you had a question or a point?
Yeah, I was just, you're Reed, you're the one, we aren't hearing the conversations, you are. You feel confident that it's just taking time to get this done, but it's gonna happen? It's gonna be on the spot.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I feel confident that it will happen. To councilmember Armstrong's point, there's only so much pushing that we can do on our end and ultimately we are relying on responsiveness from another party. And they, of course, have their own priorities and other competing demands. From the city's perspective, myself and our staff, I can assure you, we've been very diligent in our follow-up and will certainly continue to do so. We have to also be respectful that we are kind of working on someone else's timeline at this point, too.
And all of the expenses that we are incurring for the next sixty or seventy-five days are unbudgeted expenses. So somewhere you're taking out of reserves or taking somewhere and again, it just makes it more difficult to keep things balanced or move towards a balanced budget.
And part of why I hesitate to is like, we don't know when A R L's willing to start the services either. So say you do the sixty days starting today, it's, you know, the twenty-first, you know, hypothetically September twenty-first. What if they're not ready for us until like November first? What we do in a month and a half?
Mayor, council, if I may.
I don't know if you've had those.
No.
I, I, it's like you were talking, it's like maybe you have an idea on how that works and how quickly they get ready for somebody new?
Again, as I've, as I've experienced that they're excited at the prospect of Indianola becoming a customer of theirs. So I envision we will be able to make that happen relatively quickly. It's just a matter of getting the appropriate paperwork in, in place. If we wanna continue or if we wanna table this item, we certainly could, I guess. As it's just a discussion and directional item, as I think through this, if mayor and council is comfortable and now that we've got more information today with the update from Kayakota, we could move beyond working just on that letter of intent. We could certainly begin the process of getting a formal contract drafted, we can get a policy drafted. If that's council's interest, you know, staff can continue working on the letter of intent, but also simultaneously start working on the policy and start working on an actual contract too, which is ultimately which would be the direction we're heading anyway.
I think that makes the most sense.
That's kinda what I was getting at, is why are we waiting on a letter of intent? When we should be really drafting a contract because Kayakota has essentially said they don't wanna perform the services that we're asking them to. So.
I don't wanna speculate, but that also may be easier for A R L because they have other contracts out there where maybe they can just swap a few words.
Sure.
Some amounts or whatever the case is and we could get that back perhaps and ultimately.
Or suggest, that's what we do. Ryan, what's your thought?
So Bob, you're, are you saying terminate the contract and move forward with providing a contract to A R L?
I, I was one dragging my feet last week because, or two weeks ago, because we didn't know this, Kayakota. But now that we do, I think the writing's on the wall, we're gonna terminate this sometime. And every meeting we bump it down the road is another two grand we've gotta find. With our budgets the way they are and, and after listening to Jake, I, I guess sixty days, I gotta believe if they've already got contracts and that's the route we're going instead of trying to get a letter of intent, which would be very different for them, I think we cancel the contract with Kayakota, save ourselves that money and go ahead and just pursue the contract and not a letter of intent.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of that as well.
Amen.
Four votes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Somebody wants to make a motion and then we decide, then the question becomes asked. If you don't prove that with four votes, then.
Discussion and direction, right?
You want, you want to empower your city manager to give the letter?
So I would make the motion that we terminate the contact, contract with Kayakota and move forward with the contract for A R L.
Got a second? Discussion.
I'm just not ready to terminate the contract until we have a contract with dates, knowing when we would be able to start service. My hesitation and hang up is, is making sure that we have everything in place before we exit. I know, we, we know we're gonna exit.
Right, but we've spent so much time talking about budget and we've had to cut funds from so many integral programs. Every two thousand dollars, we're just throwing it away, you know, when we could be moving forward. I guess having that security, which is why I agreed the first time, you know, to delay it one more meeting. But things completely went opposite of what, you know, Kayakota had kind of indicated at that meeting, so.
Sure, and I think we're mov, we're, we'd still be moving forward. I just don't wanna put Chief and his staff in a situation where they've got a month and a half that they become animal control. That's, that's what I'm trying to avoid with what I was saying is making sure we have the contract and knowing when dates can roll. Because then Chief and his staff are put into the spot where they're gonna be animal control for whatever they're needing to be. But the Kayakota contract prevents that now because it's still in place. So we can mitigate what Chief was saying is like, we need something. And if there's a gap, they have nothing. And I think we saw today too, well, what if they need the three people, you know, a, at that site? And now we've got this aggressive dog that's out there that they can't respond to because they're there. Because we canceled the contract a month and a half too early.
Well, but Chief already said they have a truck. It wouldn't cost much to get a kennel to put in the back of that truck. That, I mean, you can get a kennel for the back of that truck for, you know, four hundred bucks.
Yes, but you also have the scenario.
Hold on, I'm gonna ask the city manager a question. Jake, in your conversations with A R L, have you really felt like there's been any hesitation on their part whatsoever about wanting to secure Indianola's business?
So given for transparency's sake, I've really been deferring the project to Brian and Jackie. So I've not physically personally had the conversation with A R L, so I don't wanna represent that I have been in the room. My information is secondhand from Brian and Jackie who've been leading the project. From my conversation with them, I've not heard any hesitation. It's been, they're, they're interested, they're excited in having Indianola as a customer. I've not heard any hesitation. It's just a matter of getting these processes done. I do echo councilmember Armstrong's concerns that we do put ourselves in a bit of a precarious situation where we could end up with nothing depending on if, again, being reliant on another source and we're subservient to their timeline. So I, I do echo those concerns, but I also echo councilmember Beach's point that we are, you know, kind of, we are spending those funds at the same point that are on budget. It is just, there's a risk involved, right? I would just wanna acknowledge that for council that making this shift without that other contract in place, there certainly is a risk involved and it becomes the appetite of how much of that risk we wanna absorb.
And what's the cost?
Let me.
Do we even, do we have an idea of what the cost is? Because we're talking about unbudgeted, right? Unbudgeted items, unbudgeted items, this is unbudgeted too. A R L's unbudgeted.
Let me ask him one further question. From your conversations with Chief Shearer, did you feel like, and I wish he was still here, but I'd ask him the question directly, but do you feel like he's excited about a relationship with A R L?
Absolutely.
That's just all, go ahead, I'm sorry, but I wanna.
No, I mean, that's why I didn't know if Jake knew cost. Because that's what I'm hearing is like, oh, we could account for these unbudgeted costs that we're paying Kayakota. A R L is unbudgeted too, folks.
I thought I heard two hundred, two hundred, two hundred and fifty an animal. Then we have also the staff time to drive them to Des Moines. And I'm, I'm just gonna go back to that scenario where we saw the need for three officers. What if one of our officers is driving an animal to Des Moines and we have a bad situation play out here?
I think in that situation, one of the supervisors would be called to the scene. Isn't there typically always a supervisor now?
And that's a little bit immaterial because we don't have any choice. Our hands are kinda tied in that regard. I, I share that with you.
I get it. It's a situation that we're taking on.
Uh, mayor, council, if I may. So the amount of, that we would pay to A R L is dependent on use because it would go from a lump sum to a per animal basis, which is correct. There's a varying amount, I believe it's around that two hundred dollar per animal situation. And again, it really becomes dependent on how much we utilize the service. So we would just pay based on what we've used, based on our peer communities in Warren County. Their use has been pretty low. One of the conversations I've had with Chief that I don't feel comfortable in sharing is that because of the way our shifts are set up, we have kind of those overlap windows because they're working the ten-hour shifts. So we would have the capability to hold an animal for a few hours if we needed to, to get to that overlap window. And that would give us the additional staff to, to make sure that someone was able to go and transport the animal without putting any of our other public safety responsibilities at risk.
Was there also a discussion, and I don't know if you were part of this discussion, so, and if it's secondhand, then you tell us. But wasn't there part of a discussion that A R L has a facility on the south side of Des Moines or somewhere located at easier location than what it is on the north side?
That is correct, there's a facility on the south side of Des Moines. I actually believe it may be the city of Des Moines facility and not A R L. So that was part of the, in my understanding, that's part of the holdup is that A R L was engaging with the city of Des Moines to see if they could possibly utilize that shelter on the south side so that it would limit the drive time for us pretty substantially.
We have a motion in a second on the floor.
Can I ask a question? Would that be temporary holding place? And then they would transfer to A R L?
That is my understanding, yeah, that would, our responsibility would be to get them, if, if that's agreeable with that arrangement, it would be, we would get them to that shelter on the south side and then they would take care of transport from there.
Any further question? Clerk call a roll.
Um, just to confirm, Ron, you seconded the motion? Just wanna make sure, thank you. Okay, councilmember Sins?
No.
Lane?
Yes.
Dolby?
Yes.
Armstrong?
No.
Aye.
We don't have four, so the motion fails. So direction for staff, what do you wanna do?
I would make a motion to start contract negotiations with A R L.
Don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion.
I have a question. Does it have to come back to us or can we give you the authority to move forward? Say the contract is done in the next week? To then move forward with terminating Kayakota?
I think we'd have to have a vote motion.
You want?
To approve the contract.
Can't proof the contract without council, so.
What about doing a special meeting?
Can we do a special meeting?
Yeah, can we do a special meeting then?
My, just to that point, my concern would be is that even if we had a draft contract, there may be something there that is not to council's liking and then I would be empowered to issue that termination letter and then come back and find out that council may not.
Right.
Be in agreement with the contract or the draft contract and then it kinda puts us in a precarious position. But special meeting would certainly be an option.
Yeah. I would be in favor of doing a special meeting so that we get the ball rolling.
I would, so, again, my recommendation is that we certainly can do a council meeting or a special meeting. Well, I mean.
Even if it's just to review the contract.
Yeah, we can, we can get the contract out, you know, for review, but our next meeting is gonna come up pretty quick because they're only a couple of weeks apart. But if there is an opportunity for a special meeting, certainly staff will engage council, we can certainly keep that on the table.
So if we do make an approval of a meeting on, or the contract on the fourth of August, we've now those stuck out that we have another full month though that we go into, is that correct? Instead of not just two weeks, but another full month and the.
No, it's a sixty days. It's a sixty days.
It'll be prorated per day.
Not a month, it's sixty days.
That just helps fill gaps for me. Like, just makes me feel better knowing that we won't have a gap.
Okay, so do you have enough direction what you need?
Okay.
We'll move forward then. New business, then we'll stock a resolution approving site plan for New Era Homes, three oh four South Twenty-first Street. And I need a motion.
So moved?
In a second.
Second.
In a second. Do we have a, go ahead, you got her bill?
Uh, mayor, council. The applicant in this case is Cody Sinclair with New Era Homes, represented by Jason Lennon with Snyder and Associates. The applicant is requesting approval of a site plan for commercial development located within the Pickard Commerce Park development, south of ninety-two and east of South Fifteenth Street. This parcel contains an acre and a half and it's been addressed as three oh four South Twenty-first Street. It's lot two of the, of the new subdivision. The parcel is currently zoned, one of those C two lots. It's for a construction sales and warehousing building at sixty by one ninety, just under thirteen thousand square feet in area, about twenty-three feet in height. Access to the site will be from.
Access to the site will be from, uh, it's utilizing that, that common outlet, uh, for, for its access, but you'll still come on and, come in off of South Twenty Street and then turn, turn east and then nine parking spaces are required and they're providing ten, including one accessible space. A five foot sidewalk, uh, will be installed, uh, from Twenty First Street and then the, the five foot, um, pedestrian walkway will be installed as well for pedestrian access. This site will be serviced with a, with a private utility and then all of the utilities will be, you know, are, uh, have been installed as part of the, part of these, part of these improvements. Stormwater detention will occur at the south end of, of the entire subdivision through, uh, through, through storm super pipes.
Uh, ma, Bill, may I ask you a question? Are those, is that serviced by, do you know if that's serviced by I M U Electric or is that, is that going to be in the area outside of I M U Electric? Yeah.
Jason Lennon with Snyder and Associates again. Uh, yes, this will be serviced by I M U.
I M U, okay, then the entire plat is serviced by I M U?
Correct.
Because there is a, I think you're right on the edge or pretty darn close to it if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, we've worked with I M U, this is their entire, this is in their service.
Thank you.
Twenty percent of the project area is required to be open space and they're providing forty-seven point seven. Uh, the plantings shown on the landscape plan, uh, are in conformance with the landscape ordinance. Hall of elevations have been provided and they are proposed to be constructed of metal panels, accent metal panels, stone veneer and windows. Uh, those elevations demonstrate compliance with our building design standards for that, for the use in the district. Uh, the site plan is in general conformance with our ordinances, subtitles and ordinance, zoning ordinance and conference of plan. Uh, staff recommends approval of the site plan for New Era Homes. Hope you take any questions.
Questions for council?
I have a question and I ask you this question, but maybe he can answer, Jason can answer this. Do you know the reason for the garage doors being on both sides, one? Three of them exit into the grass?
Uh, open air, airflow. They want to be able to open them and just have natural air come in the backside.
I, I didn't know if they had plans to have drive through for some reason.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Clerk call roll please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. I need a motion in a second, a resolution approving site plan for Pickard Lot Twelve at three hundred South Twentieth. So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Uh, the applicant in this case is High Time Investment Group LLC. Once again, represented by Jason Lennon with Snyder and Associates. The applicant is requesting approval of a site plan for another commercial development, uh, this one will be located at three hundred South Twentieth Street. Uh, it's lot twelve of Pickard Commerce Park, Lot One. This is one of those C two, uh, zone lots. Uh, this is for a sales office and warehousing building, approximately eighty by ninety and six thousand square feet in area. Uh, the building will be approximately twenty-five feet in height, uh, platted as lot twelve of Pickard Commerce Park. Access to the site will be off of South Twentieth Street. It's not going to utilize anything interior to the site. Uh, six parking spaces are required, uh, one per two hundred and fifty square feet for construction sales and one per ten thousand square feet of warehousing. They're providing nine spaces, including one accessible space, so the parking, uh, standards have been met. A five foot sidewalk will be installed along the entirety of, of Lot Twelve. And they're showing the five foot pedestrian walkway into the site from the pla, public way as well, so that meets our ordinance. The site will be serviced with public utilities, which are being installed as we speak. Stormwater detention will occur in that outlet at the south end of the site. Twenty percent of the project area is required to be open space and they're providing eighty-six point two one. Uh, so that landscape plan does meet our ordinance. Uh, the building is proposed to be constructed of metal panels, accent metal panels, stone veneer and windows. And these elevations demonstrate compliance with our, uh, building design standards as well. That's a three D rendering and then the actual, actual elevations. Uh, so the site plan is in conformance with our zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance and conference of plan. Uh, staff recommends approval of the site plan for Pickard Lot Twelve. Hope you take any questions.
Council questions?
I just have one question, um, and this is just educational for me. How long does the silk fence stay up around the property?
Till the seed is established on the site. Once the grass seed is established, then they can pull the silk fence out to help with the flow of water across the.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Jason, appreciate your help here tonight. Bill, thank you. Uh, item three, Indianola Downtown Facade Revitalization Plan, we have a public hearing for, uh, regarding plan, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost regarding Indianola Downtown Facade Revitalization Program. I need a motion in a second to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Clerk call roll please.
Councilmember Dolby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, we are now in a public hearing, so who are we doing this with? Who's leading this off?
Curtis Architecture.
Probably me.
Yeah, there you go, alright.
Good evening, my name is Jacob Gokel. I'm the project manager for Curtis Architecture and Design. Uh, our office is located in West Des Moines. Met a couple of you, but hopefully that will, uh, change here coming soon. I'd like to work with all of you on this project. Up on the screen, we have Curtis Architecture's, uh, cost projection for the facade improvements at just shy of one point one million. Cornerstone Commercial Contractors is the lowest, uh, responsible bidder at just shy of one point two million. The alternate for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is, um, side facade work on one twenty-six North Howard. Owned by Lee Adams, he requested that alternate be included so that he could see costs and determine whether or not he'd like to fund those improvements out of his own finances. He has denied that alternate. What we're looking for today is for council to approve the contract amount and award Cornerstone the improvement project. Um, I'm not sure how familiar you are all with, um, C D B G funding. It is against the law for us to negotiate the contract amount before signing it as it's a public bid. What we typically do after contract is signed and awarded, I discuss with the lowest apparent bidder cost saving measures or locally, I will talk to building owners and the city representatives I've been working with, um, regarding increased local funding. With all of that said, um, before starting construction, we always get, uh, construction agreements and easements signed with each building owner before proceeding, as well as agreement from the city about, uh, final, uh, city contribution. I believe there were a, a question or two from council, one of them I know. Um, I can reiterate my answer from my earlier email, so it's on the record. Um, the tan colored brick on one, one twenty-six North Howard extends across the property line to the south to, I believe it's A S.
Special event DJ?
Okay.
It's a small building that was an alley.
Yep, that brick is painted gray now, but it is the same facade integral with Lee Adams's facade. I've discussed and met with Tim, the owner of the DJ, uh, building a couple times. Um, called into a ceiling a couple times as well. Um, there is a steel lintel over the opening above his, uh, entryway that crosses the property line over to Lee Adams's building. When we move to remove the tan colored brick from one twenty-six North Howard, we'll rebuild a brick corbel integral with the facade to hold that steel lintel without addressing anything, uh, directly on Tim's facade. That is a discussion I had with I E T A regarding whether or not we were, uh, allowed to work on Tim's building and what that would require from us in terms of, uh, easements and contracts with the city as well as various environmental, um, criteria we need to meet, asbestos testing, radon testing, lead, um, et cetera, et cetera. So to avoid all that red tape, um, we came up with this solution to avoid, uh, integrating Tim either contractually or financially in the project.
Uh, who's got the clicker on this thing? Back that up to the, uh, Harrison Building. Where is it?
Maybe it's the last one. Keep going.
Would you like me to point to the area in question? On the edge of the page here, but this is the DJ building.
Yeah.
Small storefront, this opening above his entryway, there's a steel lintel that crosses this opening and bears near the end of that gray or silver metal band you're seeing. That's about in line with where the steel beam would be. That lintel bears in the masonry.
Lost it, there we go.
That steel lintel bears on the masonry. Both the tan colored masonry here and also behind that brick, the original facade remains and it bears on that old masonry as well. So when we remove the buff colored brick and cut down the property line with masonry saw, we want to make sure that the brick on the DJ building is still being held up. So that steel lintel will remain, but we need something to bear on, or providing a more significant spot for that steel to bear onto.
Are those windows still behind that facade?
They are.
Amazing.
Yes.
So can you go back to what kind of agreement you're putting in place, um, in terms of not damaging Tim's building?
Uh, we don't have any paperwork or signed agreements. We can certainly, uh, figure out how to include that. As of right now, the simplest thing to do, um, as far as compliance with C D B G guidelines uh, and not basically, um, instigate, instigating further um, archaeological, environmental surveys, et cetera. We've just written to Tim in email, I mean verbally as well, that, um, his building, his property won't need to be involved, uh, he won't be involved financially. Um, there's no structural impact, there's no design decisions to be made. Um, and that seemed amicable to Tim. His hope was that he would just have nothing to do with the project. He just wanted to make sure that there were no adverse effects to his property.
Right. That his facade remains intact.
Correct.
Thank you.
We are happy to try to provide some sort of written letter signed by, um, we seek guidance from the city attorney on this, but likely the building owner and the city, maybe that could be included in the easement agreement ver, which.
In the event that something would happen, um, how, well, how would that be handled?
City's responsible, city's buildings responsible. We damage it, we fix it. But it doesn't sound like it's going to be involved at all, so.
As far as what I can tell you about the I E T A side of things, they are the ones that provide funding to the C D B G program through HUD. Um, they will have certain criteria if something like that were to happen about, um, who, how and when that building gets involved. Um, they're fairly strict on that. Right now, we're going through a similar situation in Glenwood where, um, a property within the D T R program has a structural concern where their brick is tied into the brick of the adjacent property and both are Boeing. We're jumping through some hoops right now to meet their guidelines and how to best fix, uh, the adjacent property. Uh, in this case, um, in Glenwood, the buildings are integral in a way that these buildings are not in Indianola. Um, I think that we have very little concern about any adverse condition affecting Tim's building.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during a public hearing? Seeing none, I would, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second. Sandra, you want to call the roll?
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost regarding the Indianola Downtown Facade Revitalization program. Do I have a motion in a second? So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Resolution awarding a contract, the lowest bidder, I'm sorry, that was who again?
Cornerstone Commercial Contractors.
Cornerstone Commercial Contracting, thank you, uh, for the Indianola Downtown Facade Revitalization Program.
So moved?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say I'm very excited to see this move forward and excited for all these building owners and they're.
I'm, I'm very excited to see the final product.
Yes, I, the, the Harrison's building has me very excited.
Yeah.
I, I want to see where, uh, the LED sign ends up.
Go ahead.
If I may speak, um, I can hang around for a little bit if anyone has questions. I'm happy to answer them regarding the project.
Thank you.
Specifically about the Harrison sign, there's been some discussions of that.
Great.
What's worry about that?
There have been a lot of questions about it.
We have a closed session here, so I don't know how long that would take, but you're welcome to stick around and we'll, we'd call you back after that in, in here, so. Um, we have a motion in a second, okay, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Stones? Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we are in a formal resolution here, um. Do you want a motion first and then let you read it, Doug's up? Yes, please. Need a motion for resolution accepting and approving informal resolution. So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second. Clerk call roll. Hold it, let me, let me do it. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, Doug, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, council at the, uh, April seventh, twenty twenty-five Indianola City Council meeting, when we were filling the position became Councilman Lane's position. Uh, there were four candidates. We used a process that had been used before and that was council uh, took secret ballots, whittling down the candidates until, uh, a candidate was selected to fill the position. Um, the, that was done by ballots, uh, secret ballots and we had, um, then got down to two, um, preferred candidates. Um, once we got down to two preferred candidates, we got into a situation where we couldn't get a majority that would appoint uh, one candidate to fill the position. So we were a bit of an impasse. At the second phase of that selection process then, uh, we called two ten minute recesses and even though the council didn't leave the council chambers or were in the vestibule, um, there were discussions about what was going to happen. There were discussions about that didn't involve, uh, what was going to happen. Um, however, um, that did occur, then the, uh, it ended up the, the tie was broken and uh, the candidate was selected. We were notified that a, uh, complaint was made with the Iowa Public Information Board concerning, uh, both of those aspects. Um, the mayor, the city clerk, um, and the interim city manager directed that, uh, we, per entry, deal with uh, I P I B to, if, if something was done incorrectly, that we get it fixed. Um, and the public needs to know, in no time was the council trying to hide anything. We didn't stop them as council because we thought the process we were using, uh, should have been acceptable. I P I B disagrees with that and so, um, I think just having no. And so I think just having known in the past why that process was used, it was used so that, not to hide anything, but just so people didn't have to vote against someone who might be their peer at some later point in time. And so I, there was nothing nefarious about that, what occurred. It was simply a process that had been used in the past. We talked to IPib. IPib said, "We don't agree with you. We think that process is incorrect. We think that the breaks, even though everybody stayed around and there was nothing done and closed back doors, we think we shouldn't have used that." So we agreed with IPib, and again, the mayor and the city clerk were pretty adamant that if we broke it, we need to fix it, and if something was done wrong, we'll fix it. At the next meeting, then, we did announce the votes and those secret ballots, and some of you may remember that, so that we could rectify that right away. And then we negotiated with IPib to see what did, what did they want the council to do? What would satisfy them short of an actual complaint? And we came, IPib's council is great to work with. They recognize we're trying to do anything. And so we came up with this informal resolution. As a part of that, I need to read a part of that resolution so that it's into the record so IPib knows the council, even though the resolution is part of the packet, and that's what would be approved, just so IPib knows the council is committed to that resolution.
Let me stop you for just a second. That was on April 7th when that all occurred. We didn't actually choose a candidate that night. We moved to a special session on April 14th, if I'm not mistaken, when Bob was chosen to fill that position in a different format.
Yes.
And I personally see this as a great opportunity for us. We've had discussions in the past about having a lot of public meeting, open meeting training with our staffs of all of our different boards and commissions, and I really see this as a great opportunity for us to move forward and get IPib down here and have those kinds of trainings take place. So in a lot of ways, it's been a good thing for us because now we're going to be moving forward and having those trainings. We don't have those scheduled yet. I don't think IPib has gotten us information yet. But we will be scheduling those trainings, not only for the city council, but also for IMU board and all of our boards and commissions and the staff that works with those boards and commissions, so. Go ahead.
All right. Number one of the informal resolution is this informal resolution will be formally approved at a meeting of the Indianola City Council, and the following terms shall be read into the record. The city will include a copy of the informal resolution in its meeting minutes, and will provide IPib staff with a copy of the minutes demonstrating approval. Two, by adopting this informal resolution, the city acknowledges that the process used in the April 7th, 2025 meeting and described in the background section of this informal resolution to fill the vacant council member position violated Chapter 21. Specifically, the city acknowledges that the individual votes of the council members should have been made public, made available to the public at the time they were cast, and members should not have used meeting recesses to conduct deliberation on the appointment outside of the public's view. Three, the city will develop an official policy for the conduct of future appointments, which shall include a requirement that each participating campaign council member's vote be made public during the open session in which the election is held. The city will provide IPib staff with a copy of this policy after it's approved. Four, all city council members, along with the city's mayor, will complete training related to the public meetings' records. This training will be arranged by the board and conducted with IPib during an open meeting. The terms of the informal resolution will be completed within 60 days of the date of approval of the informal resolution by all parties. Upon showing proof of compliance, the IPib will dismiss the complaint as successfully resolved. And the mayor is correct. The mayor was actually adamant that we actually have the training. IPib suggested it, and the mayor said that was something that was really necessary. And it is, it never is a bad idea. So those are the terms and conditions. Take any questions you have.
Any questions for Doug? So... We haven't made a motion yet, or have we?
We have.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. If there's no questions, we'll go ahead and take the roll, please.
Councilmember Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving amendment to the city council policy folder to add a policy to fill a mayor or council vacancy that's in your packet. This is what we came up with very shortly after the complaint was filed, and Doug and his staff took this, I believe, and took it to IPib, if I'm not mistaken.
They have, they haven't approved it. They won't approve it till it's passed, but...
But I think it does do all the things that we've talked about here, about making it open and the process by which we follow. And so I need a motion and a second to approve that amendment to the city council policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clerk call or roll, please?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Dolby?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. City managers report.
Can I say something?
You may.
I just want to make a comment that we were, I guess, acting in what we believed to be in compliance based on our legal council's guidance. And the city values the opportunity to resolve this matter informally and views it as the, as an important step in promoting transparency and accountability. So I'm glad that we're taking these steps and moving forward.
100%. City managers report.
All right. Community Economic Development Director position. We had our first review of applicants last week. We were up to 27 total applications, so very happy with the turnout. Believe our resources and tools that we used to get outreach really generated some good candidates. So we'll be looking to move forward with first and second round interviews here in the very near future to hopefully bring another great member of our team on board. At least Mayor Richardson and I, maybe some others, had the chance to meet Dr. Schnupner up at Simpson Campus last week. Really wonderful meet and greet event they held there, and we're looking forward to Dr. Schnupner starting officially on July 28th. I know Mayor Richardson is very excited for her, him and I to both meet with her and talk about the future partnerships between the city and Simpson College. Want to thank the Prairie Meadows Community Betterment Grants, as well as congratulate the Fire and Police Department on some awards that they had received. The Fire Department was awarded about $27,600 to purchase a utility task vehicle, or UTV, to enhance emergency response and capabilities in areas with limited access. And the Police Department was awarded $30,000 to update car video systems. Regions Bank Art Sale. Sandra will actually know this better than I, but had a chance to engage with our Public Arts Mission. And through the event that they had to sell some of the artwork at the Regions Bank building, they did sell about 12 paintings for $950, and there are about 20 paintings left to go that are available for sale. The Arts Mission is considering different opportunities for how they can continue to solicit offers on those pieces of art. Last thing I'll say, I know Mayor Richardson did a great job of covering a lot of the upcoming events. But on the theme of art, I do also want to call out that we have the Indianola Summer Arts Festival happening July 26th and 27th. There's a lot going on in the next couple of weeks. As someone who's new to Indianola, I'm very excited to be able to take in all the different events and engage with members of the community.
Hopefully, the weather will be cooperative, but it won't be a, you know, rain or burning, burning day. Let's put it that way. 100% humidity or 90%, whatever it seems to be.
The parade's always nice and warm.
It is, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. We now have a, anything with discussion, future agenda item? To that point about excess paintings still, I would still like to see us, if we're going to do something with surplus items out of Regions or any other part of the city departments that we have, we need to come up with a plan on how we're going to do that. So I think, Jake, maybe you and I can sit down and brainstorm a little bit, and if it's not something that's going to work and time-wise, then figure out Plan B. But I do think that we need to probably, if we're going to do some kind of a sale of some type, we do it. Any other discussion regarding future agenda items? I know we've got second meeting September is...
Party tax abatement?
Thank you. Yeah. Tax abatement. Do we have anything particularly on? Well, now we've got Kaya Koda on the first Monday in August, but anything else that you know upcoming, Stan?
Yes, we had the Police Department annual report this evening, of course. In August, we are having, planning to have a website redesign update coming from Aaron. And then as council, we do have a number of topics. We have a preliminary schedule that we will get out to council here on the, we're filling in upcoming study session topics. And we also do, of course, take note of the topics that came up, a number of them in a previous meeting. So we will be looking to insert those into council meetings as we go on. So this is a calendar that Jackie and I will, are working to update and share with council just to make sure that you know that we're respecting the requests that you made of staff, and we're going to be plugging those in strategically, hopefully, over the coming months.
Do you know when the East Hill Crest pedestrian crossing will be coming back?
The median? Yeah, we're anticipating that to come back on August 4th. Next meeting, we should have a recommendation for council on that item. All right, well, on that, to that point, APM will put you on this about truck routes. We also have some updates on that as well.
In council, we have a open house scheduled on August 5th at 5:30 PM, Indianola Activity Center. Mails have been sent out to primarily business owners who are impacted with the truck routes. But we will also have social media communications posted out in our city website, too, regarding that open house. Once we have that, we are still working with Doug on drafting the truck ordinance, truck route ordinance that we have. We'll eventually bring it to council, probably in September, for the three readings that they'll follow up after that.
What was the time again on that?
August 5th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Activity Center. Okay. Thank you. Aaron Young, you are presenting at the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference. What day is that? Is that going to be on Thursday, that week?
Thursday, September 18th, 10:45 to 11:45.
Thank you. And the topic is?
Leveraging, Max, telling your story, leveraging the resources and strategies.
Thank you. Just if anybody's interested, I probably ought to let everybody know. Tomorrow, I'm interviewing for the president's, Vice President of the Iowa League of Cities. That's at 10:30 tomorrow morning. That will be determined at the annual conference as well, whether or not that's approved or not. So I don't know who I'm up against. Doesn't make any difference. I'm just going through the interview process, so. Any other items for discussion? If not, I would make, take a motion to move into closed session accordance with Iowa Code 21.51C to discuss strategy with the council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent and where its exposure would likely be prejudiced or disadvantaged.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Clerk call or roll, please?
Councilmember Dolby?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Beach?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We'll take about a five-minute break here to go to the bathroom or do whatever we need to do, and then get into closed session.